Raise your hand if you think this many people will actually live with it.
Yeah.
Oh, we are? Well, now.
This is Italian, I would need them to get ballers to go on. Do you have to say eight ballers?
Oh, that's not I had to do it. Be considered here if you want to be on live stream. Mara.
I am live.
And you're here, right? Well, why, why?
But it's totally didn't help us, it only is my leadership.
That you're busy too long. You're just. In the lighting. We have five o'clock, so everyone write in the pledge. Thank you. All right.
We have minutes from six eleven twenty-five. Hasn't had a chance to review minutes.
Yes. Do I have a motion? Got a second? All in favor? Minutes from six twenty-five? Everyone had a chance to review. We have a motion. We have a motion, we got a second. All in favor? Six. From June, everyone had a chance to review receipts. Good? Do I have a motion to approve receipt? You have been motioned. All in favor? Claims. This is a chance to review those claims. We have a motion to approve claims as presented. All in favor? Financials, everyone. Motion to approve financials as presented. Motion to approve this one. Second. All in favor? Building Commissioner. Do you want her?
Okay, so I.
Yes, yes.
Get your number three of your back at code. We saw that Dave. So you were. And I've said all of your shoulders and some of your parts.
Any questions for Matt on building Fisher's side? Good. Moving on, Matt, ours.
Five. We also. Fours. Try. The list for. Trying for one single. They'll say both the.
We don't have any question, but just to sure, make sure, okay, there. There are no conflict of interest or issues that you do have or succeed already.
The past people who, in the past, she's. Just be a step to buy their money. It's a five year. Now the state is changing the. Any damage equipment, any if they use. Take this firing. Okay, you can build this.
I have.
Yes.
If you do the bill. And he doesn't get any response, can we put a lien up for that? That's something I'll need to review. This one. Uh, this is something that I can review too, I wasn't aware of this issue we're gonna talk about, right, so I'll defer. So.
Hey, what was your thought? We'll just go ahead and find out. Figure out coverage for one way.
Yeah, then you had an inspection, did you have that inspection? The house inspection.
No, so we're going tomorrow for that. Inspection one.
One, okay.
Once that's done, it's the person.
I have the time. Anything for Matt? Good, good, Mike. Good. Bridgetown manager.
Uh, AT&T is no longer wanting to make a contract with us for the, uh, ten other Westwater. Decided to change the direction. Uh, speaking of Westwater Tower, Sparkles completed the. All the ingredients, good as new, actually did a good job, so good to go, they are part of the concern. Uh, also Yoder, all they completed the stormwater project on the first street. They got that line for your place, we got all the ground level today. Uh, we have one little bit of a trial we gotta fix, but that'll be next year when the savings back in town can patch up. Uh, Town and Country has replaced the storm structures there at Allen and Third Street. Uh, they've actually done paving, so everything's done, it actually looks good, did a good job. While they were digging there, there now we came across water that we didn't know we had, so that delayed us a few days and had to work down there, but we got through it. Figure issue on Third Street, the parking lot, Rod Green. Reached out to him several times. I got no response, Trudy had reached out, he answered right away. And said he had a couple missing calls for me, but never called him back, told Judy to call him back, I yet heard Ron to complete that project. So therefore the paving on that's gonna be pushed back to later in the year. Town and Country is back in the area, they can hopefully get that paid. But in the meantime, we've gotta get a, figure out something with Rod Green to get that over here to complete the project. Trudy, can you, I mean.
How about you from your next.
Okay, who knew that? See if you can get a hold of him, I mean, he's already started the project. Well, he's better than Fortune, he's still owed. Very, well, then maybe he's. So we still.
We, so like we'll try that and revisit it, we can do it hopefully this week.
Yeah, see.
Uh, the dead push to the cast park by the big hill, we're moving. We'd sell that, we're gonna throw some grass seed. If our quarter, somebody wants to do something with that area. Get together, figure something out. Um, we're gonna be asking about more seating than pool. She recommended thirty or forty-five more lounge chairs. At four hundred and fifty dollars a chair. Broke numbers about thirteen thousand dollars in chairs. Go to the same brain we have there now, sort of being matched. Want to do something different? Four different options?
I suggest they would be three to ten, thank you.
I suggest a very two.
Didn't get that orange, when I saw four fifty a chair, I just.
It's during the week and week, if you don't, if you don't go and read the letter. You're not gonna get a chair in so long to. So. There's not.
There's, there were regular duty carries up there, duty match charities set in, but those all ripped out. Those are about nine years. What, the regular scene chairs? I didn't know those. The blue mesh one was smaller.
There are people that want bad chairs, be a less than chairs. Get two, so they're bad chairs themselves.
Is that something made any?
Maybe see if they have. But we don't have a problem with people being chairs.
We need a decision for the board, but you get a problem. Issue would have been.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not talking to support bad chairs. And they are. Why we have to decide? They're wanting to bring here, not only calling in on to the front.
True.
I'm sure. Any chairs off the median.
Check the rest of those chairs.
I know. Uh, we're on a pool topic. Last day for the pool to be open. Question. Out of the schedule, it sounded like, it looks like the fiscal back the thirteenth of August, Wednesday. I recommend maybe the tenth, which is a Sunday. Close after the tenth. Then come back Monday, pin everything out, get everything put away. Still have a day before school starts. That's my suggestion, but.
Thought. Don't stop it, right? Switch. Staffing. Yeah. Which brings up the thing. Close. He sent a ten. That was my.
Oh, I've been working with Matt here. Because of the. More features were sent, so we'll see. Yes, lose your number one shout. Send some ideas I had. We're going to, so we had a sign. Can't find the sign.
Well. So where are we? Meeting with. That is. What they doing?
Calendar.
I mean, it was, it wasn't a date, it was just like. We're gonna have this. Although you're talking bridges, yeah. See that? I think it was. Can you follow up? Good? Please to. But he's not here and I don't have a report. I give a small one. One, so we meet every month. We're warned, we have one that. And since April. So the opposition to having deputy marshal. Go down, we start getting those vehicles, all of which were torn out there. Water check, less opportunity to address. I'm good, it's gonna start us, have one more to check off for. Or this. They've had plenty of time, man, they've had plenty of time, their stickers have been on the cars, they. They, they should have been. Seventy-six plus.
Effectively, when do you get?
Sorry.
When, when exactly?
Here, they are wonderful. Purple, it says the time. Yes, I can get it to. Just the three, right, the stickers.
Yeah. It'll be a six, seven star, and if they get through. Need the other things like that. Else is there, if they haven't.
And they've been marked with the sixty days of probation. Through a, a brother pleasure that was withered by the. Markle, and they've got seventy-two hour postage placed on the. We'll be on that. All right. Deal. I'll say super. You never know. Aviation.
That four in here, six means complete that. Upgraded that. This, uh.
Yep.
Did they know that some packs of mobile platform? Ten frame or safety? Or safety earth base, the roads are full of four thousand feet in the. They have submitted to Indiana, the head contractors for review. But then, I didn't say, no, you can't go. They'll pay it. Two whole tower. These are the new minerals for airport, which means the air force is skyable. Now you can, the airport is slow, wow. You know what people really give me?
And what does the tower have to be to be in your state?
Same thing you gave me, okay, they said. One, one twenty to one fifty.
Uh, can I speak? Yeah. So.
And then you have the monitor.
That's me, yeah, being here for sure.
For favor, just for the subordinates. Back to you on the exact.
He wants some for Jim. You'll give me a big if you want to look. Thank you, Jim. Airport.
Treeport is supposed to be Christmas, July. Free supposed to be November, the beach. If not, we're back about land water conservation grants yet. So we've got a group for our safety, uncut federal. Come back around. Starting working on Indiana Trail Program, we have to mend our hearts together, so. That's it.
Anything facing? For the, thank you. Yep. Appreciate it. Task force, we, uh, took July off. Skip. But this year. August will get that a lot and start looking at. The view of the strategic land we had. So. Yeah, your mic, I'm testing. Journey. Yeah, so. We got money from Jeff, I thought that didn't start.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So I was thinking you're, you're off. Yeah. So we're supposed to be getting. Yeah. How much should we receive?
It's under. And while you're on it. I set up a. And then it's a. That's right here, fourth one, they. He calls me two eighteen.
Yeah, because really we don't. Don't necessarily love having money, but on the other hand, we don't want to start the clock. Sure, starting the clock, I'd rather wait, get it next year, this year. Yeah, but, yeah, there's a ten year clock. Unless that, is, is that tip money from our gift, or is that tip money for the? Is there another ten? Well, didn't, didn't arrow to me yet. We need to, jobs. Because I was pretty sure our. Don't be.
That means that I make a motion for.
Create a tip fund in the number. So. All in favor? I, uh. Do you have any? Any information?
If there's. Is.
I was thinking it was true.
The most recent response I have has been said we'll be getting started late June and the survey or which one.
Escape. And then, do we, uh, we need to send, to send out anything? Get the survey and you've got the offer. Setting. Dennis, as far as bonding or whatever we need to.
We wanted to wait until we have numbers from Westler first, I agree. But I mean, we'll be doing the vague, known being free. I'm calling, we tear my brain and try to allow now.
Yeah, but we needed way to get it triggered.
Yeah, maybe, I think so, yes, and my.
So we need to reach out to him still again. Don't know. Ricky, you met with them, right?
I didn't reach out to them.
Reach out to her and just see if you can tell me. Or the background. Or budget.
You said maybe there. For your twenty twenty six.
We take.
Pay. Pay me that. About the middle of the box, I'm gonna enter everything. My question.
Now. Do we want to do the employee? Evaluations? That used to be done and we kind of did away with that, right? Thanks, I've been here, we haven't done, do you want to start that again, Mike?
I've never done that.
You've never done, I have done since I've been here. Into your job. Most of this project employee evaluation stamp. How long does the budget take?
Eight weeks. If this.
No.
It's that key. Eight weeks, you're talking eight weeks. And you'll want to notice those separate. Evaluation.
It seems to be what we're talking about, that's a missed over the call. Yeah. Yeah. You have uncomfortable column. Or what we can help you with it.
In that sense, that's medium.
Right. I'm going to Sony further, what I'm thinking. Well, regularly starts at what? Three. So.
After lunch.
Okay. Very good time here. I. No. When is? My count.
Twenty, yeah.
Be third. Want to do like eleven thirty? Or do you do twelve? Let's do eleven thirty, ready?
I gave you pictures, David's here, so maybe David the black too.
We could set that. Ricky, weigh in on this. In terms of this, what planning thing that the town waste? You want to honor the time or would you want to disagree? So we need to.
For the evaluation.
Yeah. The copy of the whole thing of, you know, what is the community, what are we doing? Job. Yeah, you want to do that individually or? Make it such.
I'm not. You got to set this plan. Slide everybody.
Yeah, Ricky, would you schedule everybody?
Okay, hopefully I'm ready. With during this large five hour. Can you tell you pretty much? If you want to do the bird? Yeah, they do first and.
It's thirteen, twelve.
Twelve. Are we good with that? Okay. Or you go fifteen and then. I mean, if you're waiting, maybe I've done. We'll do fifteen, maybe seven.
So you want to do maybe that heat session for? You know, I feel like I have my hand. Cause.
I'm forcing. If you do that and then there's a five. Yeah.
Ricky, how many you have?
Thirty.
Three plus she was four, that's five. Jamie Brian says.
If.
Seven. So. I think. Four with Ricky, Matt, Jamie, Ryan. Agreed.
Is it you, we're gonna.
Yeah. So. Alright, so. Fifteen minutes.
So two.
Yeah, I'll do two. You want to start? Start. Alright, then we have eleven thirty. Lunch first and then we'll start at twelve, so twelve to two. And then from two to. Two to four, we'll probably need a couple hours to do all that. Okay, if we're discussing budget, can we do ordinance at the same time or those have to be separate meetings also? Okay, perfect. So we can just make a meeting starting at. This. So if we go through budget, it takes longer. Yep, and we still talk about properties after that. Perfect success. Okay, thank you. Thanks. Horizon Tower.
Pictures.
Pictures here.
Anything you want to. Grab some.
So we had, I have a page of like he's bringing his trash, personal trash from home. To the here, you know. He walks past dumpster, I thought I asked him. He said, yes, he is. Well, hasn't he had some trash? The dumpster out from. And so. The data handles. Before then. He said he didn't. Because trash, it's like. Said that there's nothing in there and now your trash. So he stops. And uh cleaned Monday afternoon and. There was trash in the men's wrestling bathroom. He forgets. There was deeply in the uh baseball.
This has already been addressed once, right?
He just wanted to.
Sure. Then you have a drag game.
And that's what I told him. He's gonna use. He was. When they did. He's not a straight. Because he knew that first that ball baseball without something. That we have their.
I mean, I don't care if he brings it to the community center and throws it in the dumpster out front. And that's what I told him. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, where, where?
Something trash. He's broke. Try your trash. Yeah, I get what you're saying. That's. That's question. But who would be best to have a conversation with them?
I've already talked to them once, I know some. It just means. Pictures. So this is all news to me, which we can. And all this. The only thing, the only reason that anything Ricky this time is because. And Nikki contracted, you guys are the ones that so. Bill or. Bill.
So I would say just one, but my opinion would be Ricky, if you are willing. And just tell him, please put his trash in the dumpster outside. That's fine, um. Then I guess if that doesn't fix it, we can go to the next step. Um.
I don't.
Long.
Yeah. I don't want.
Sure.
They wouldn't call it a nuisance, right? Like it would come in. Like he was. Eating it out. Leaving in there. You say you can.
Right.
Can't do that. But taking it into a building with not always being used and leaving the trash with that creating.
The trash. But. After talking to Keith something, we look into it first.
Yeah.
And eating itself by point of it. He heard from trash, made a. In my. Station of why. What do you want?
Okay. Let's have talking, if you don't mind talking, go. Talk to him, if it continues to happen, come back and we'll deal with it then. And we'll go with that? Thanks, Gary. Yep, yep. Alright. You're up now. You talk from there, whatever.
First one, other.
Maybe get.
Obviously, we have two answers, if they in local airports. We. This room. We didn't require. Um, I didn't know about what he said about losing some. That's a thing same. As far as like.
Every airport. There's, there's safety. And it started out like. Ground runway. Four, but each one the ends of the range, there is on side of runway. But you come off the surface, as you come out from runway, it's quite. Very weird. Then as you come out, it steps out and comes out so far and it's. Little ball. Little ball. But. Of course. Go down to be from the. Almost.
Yeah, and this is due to uh planes.
Yeah.
Um, so. There were a couple. Have the. That's being, it's like this. What's yours? Um. We have previously. Well, that's them. We, we realize that this area. ATNTs. Looking here. Um, I do want. To make this maybe one scenario. One. Area. That's what we're trying to do. Um. It. Tell us something. Specifically. Get here. Um. If there's other properties that are available. Like here, it was cosigning this area. Right? So we've, obviously team. ATT. So in this area. The towers. These time. Where we need to. He's one spirit. Um, so that's why we need to be here, um. So at the end of the day, we'll do work. Correct. Now we're. If you guys have another idea, location that you would. Definitely like. Um, I've done plenty of things around at airports. And airport, airports. You know, normally if you're perfect, you can wear your. You're perfect. Usually if you're over here or something. These five, that's. The pencil here.
Is, is this. BSR. Will only turn forty. Maybe from the continuous situation. Where. Over there, they can't see, there are no windows in there, always going long. But if you get to your car, it's all destroyed. And I'd be great. I'd be great again, I do want.
I love your same. So um. We can get there. Be here. Search, but whatever thing is. Um. Like for example, great TNT, I don't know why I'm a part of that here. But you know.
What's? Sorry. Something like that work? Or where you want it in Horizon, I mean, it's outside of town. I mean, but it's up a lot higher with somebody. Where is that? The water tower.
West water.
Oh, west water.
Right. And it. Water. Water. Stop. I don't believe. I got. That really might be in a water. One, what? You know. You have to probably. Some hours. And doing that every year. And then also. Anytime. Well. Is. I don't.
Fifteen years, it gets better.
Yeah. Very good. That would be, that would be a. Do you know that one? You know what? You know what you're doing. You. You. What the engineers decided. That's on. I. So. But. Like I said before, I think. This area. And there's. Um, and.
Yeah.
I don't think the existing. Appears to be around eighty. Is there a timer in which you have to. Um, they want uh me to get. You gotta do anything. What maximum. Yeah.
One thing you will need is. If you can still. They'll take it to the.
From running when a survey. Ricky. Um. So if you guys have. Thank you all well. That's always good.
That that would be great.
And I'll come to discussion with ATNT. I'll talk to them, see what their. I'm guessing it's.
Well, we'll let you communicate with you, Lynn, and we'll get sound on race together. If we figure that out.
So how many towers do you own in? Um.
So. One that is. Bisonism is on east or. How near before? So that's the, I believe that's the closest one. And ours our towers. Would have three miles at the most. And it all depends on the height. And the terrain course is pretty flat, so that's not really an issue here. And then. Population center. A lot of that. It's been people. Using that service, but in town. Lots of people. Curves, which creates.
Good. Thank you, we'll be in contact.
Okay. Logs and elevation.
Thank you guys. Privilege of the floor. Mara.
I would like to say that I think Ricky and his boys. Are doing magnificent job. Keeping up with it. Thank you very much, David. Um, and then I also want to say, um, that. That. Maybe a little. It doesn't involve. Singing yet. Something else I saw. And um, and just that, you know, Casey, the. And I miss this. You know, it's gaining some awesome reputation. So. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Old business. Old business. Good, Mike, any old business? Okay. I want new business.
I mean, someone.
Sure, yes.
So. She. That Rock Bay, and she wanted to reach out to us and see where I thought. Oh, this is the one that uh. Mentioned. Municipal solid waste. So. Is yeah. So this is like, she's, are you saying that she's proposing a just full solid waste processing?
That is a serious question. Zero and.
So the reason. The other.
Is it? Well, the facility we're trying to put in.
Right, this is. She said the power board. Yes.
Okay. Sorry. No, you're fine. Maybe send that over to us.
Yeah.
Let's take a look at that, like what says iron, I didn't see what's. Right, yeah, and what's just more information, I mean, I don't think she. Perfect. Yeah. Shoot that last book. I don't think. Yeah, well, I'll shoot you that. Yeah, shoot that or do, we'll take a look at it. Any more new business? New? Good, Julie? Uh, most. Second, yep, all there, I. Thank you, everyone.
Big bald head.